Please call the roll.
Kuz?
Here.
Zingy? Here. Gage? Here. Flora?
Here.
Isom? Here. Severson?
Here. Would you please, Mark, would you lead us to the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Under Communications, we have a proclamation. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse in this nation is reaching epidemic proportions, and whereas it's imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by the community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyle, no use of illegal drugs, and no illegal use of legal drugs, and whereas businesses, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical institutions, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to the healthy drug-free lifestyle by wearing and displaying red ribbons during the week-long campaign, whereas our community of Ketchikan, Alaska further commits its resources and spirit to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign. Now therefore be it resolved that Lou Williams III, Mayor of the city of Ketchikan, does hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31st, 2017 as Red Ribbon Week, and encourage all citizens to practice, participate in the drug prevention education activities not only during Red Ribbon Week, but all year long making it a viable statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. Somebody here to receive this proclamation tonight.
First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for this proclamation, and it really means a lot due to the drug epidemic and what's going on within Ketchikan. I like it, like my friend here just said, I would like, thank you very much for supporting Red Ribbon Week. I would like to say that we are having, if you can possibly have the time to, out of your schedule, to go to the fair, the Resilient Fair, that's happening at the Saxon Community Center, Saturday from 11 to 2. It'd be great if you could make an appearance and find out exactly what we are doing to help the community.
Could I ask you to please state your name for the record, please?
My name is Leah Harding.
Kari Montero.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Bring this down to person to be heard. We have one, Josh Dossett.
What I gave you is an application for our Citizens Academy. It's going to kick off here November 1st. I'd like to at least get one or two of you in there, to give you a better idea of what we do, see kind of behind the curtain. It would be a goal of mine to see in the next few years that pretty much everybody on the council has gone through at least one of these, so. You guys got any questions?
We're just going to make jewelry do it.
All right. Nothing too strenuous. It's Tuesday nights, a couple hours of classroom, so it's not council night.
Nothing physical?
Nothing physical, and then up to three hours on the weekend on Saturday where we're going to take what we learned Tuesday night and put it into practicals.
Thank you. Thank you. That brings us down to the consent agenda. If there's no objections, I would like to move items 6A1, and then 7A4, and B1 for the consent. Seeing no objections, we will do that. Do I have a motion?
Motion to consent, adding those three items.
Second. The move in segment. Would you, any discussion? Could you please read the items?
Approval of minutes, regular city council meeting of October 5th, 2017, and special city council meeting of October 9th, 2017. 2017 Fire Department Vehicle Replacement Command Number Two. Budget transfers, modification of 2012 staffing for adequate fire and emergency response safer grant. Agreement to joint use of Ketchikan Public Utility System Poles, GCI Communications Corp. Appointments to boards and commissions, Mayor Williams. Alder Tree removal within the Venetia Way right-of-way and adjacent to the city Civic Center auxiliary parking lot. And ordinance number 171859 amending Chapter 1112 telecommunications services and rates of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, first reading.
Please call the roll.
Yes.
Isom? Yes. Flora?
Yes.
Gage? Yes. Zingy? Yes. Kuz?
Yes.
That then brings us down to 7A1, introduction of District Attorney Benjamin Hofmeister.
Good evening. So, introduction is actually very apropos for what I plan on doing here. I am the District Attorney for Ketchikan. I was named District Attorney last October, and when I did that, I made a list of bodies and people and agencies that I wanted to go out and actually speak to directly. This council, I think the connection that we have, our office has with this council is through the Ketchikan Police Department. We are the legal advisors for all criminal matters for the Ketchikan Police Department. We work with officers and detectives in the investigation stages of criminal cases, and we litigate all Ketchikan Police Department cases with limited exceptions in both district and Superior Court. We also, I saw Chris Burns here when I came in, we also work with the Ketchikan Fire Department in arson investigation cases, and we've actually made presentations to the arson investigation task force here in Ketchikan as well. A little bit about myself, I grew up in Spokane, Washington, and after graduating from college, I spent a year as an AmeriCorps volunteer, and then I worked at a college, working in an office for volunteer services, trying to get people in college, at this college I worked in Pennsylvania, to engage into volunteer opportunities. After that, I started to go to law school, I went to the University of Notre Dame, and I graduated in 2001. I, in the interim there, I worked an internship with the Anchorage District Attorney's Office, and that was what brought me to Alaska in the first place. After I graduated, I worked for the Honorable Judge John E. Reese. He was a Superior Court Judge up in Anchorage, he worked at Civil Docket there. And after that, I started working with the District Attorney's Office in Anchorage. I worked there for about two years, and then I accepted a position with the Dillingham District Attorney's Office, which was supervised by the Anchorage Office, but I was by myself, and I was the sole prosecutor for all of Bristol Bay. And I think most people from this area can appreciate that particular area, because we hear a lot about it in terms of fishing industry. It is a vast area, it was a great experience. After two years, I came back. I was back in Anchorage, I was in a specialized unit working for, working in sexual assaults and sexual assaults of minors for approximately two years. Worked in the violent crimes unit, which handled all homicides and other kind of violent crimes, robberies, things of that nature. After I spent a couple of years there, I was, I was hired by the Attorney General's Office. I worked in the torts and workers' compensation section, and my job was to represent state employees and state agencies in tort actions, and so I worked with amongst other agencies, the Office of Children's Services, the Alaska State Troopers, the Department of Corrections, the Department of Environmental Conservation. So I did that for about three years, and then James Scott became the District Attorney for Juneau, and the opportunity for me to come to Ketchikan made its, made its way. So in July of 2013, I came to Ketchikan, and I started working as an Assistant District Attorney under Steve West, who was the District Attorney for many, many years. In 2016, Steve, after 30 years, told us that he was going to be leaving in the next month to retire, which we were all very happy about. And something that I don't know if this council knows, or many people in Ketchikan knows, that Steve was named the Prosecutor of the Year last year for the state of Alaska, in recognition in large part for his 30-plus years of service. I think if you know Steve, he put in a really good 30 years, and we're all very appreciative of that. So the timing of that, his departure, while we were happy for him, could be worse, because we lost another attorney at the same time. Aaron Michaels, who was here for a number of years, or a number of months, ended up becoming a court system employee, and he is now magistrate up in Kotzuyu. So when I started as the District Attorney in August, October 1st, I supervised a grand total of zero attorneys, and I handled the entire caseload for approximately a month and a half. That's changed, we've hired a couple of attorneys, our staff is almost back up to what it should be. We lost one staff person due to budget cuts over the last year, but we're doing, we're doing fairly well. As I said before, one of my goals was to come and meet the bodies that we work with, and to hopefully have a dialogue. I hope to answer your questions, and I'd be more than happy to answer questions tonight if you have anything on any kind of criminal justice issue. In the future, if you, you know, you can send word through the police department, and I'd be more than happy to come in and speak to you about anything that might be something that the council is interested in. Because I didn't do that for tonight, oh, and I should, I should pause for one second. One of the reasons why it's taken me so long to come to this council as opposed to last year in October when I was named District Attorney is twofold. First of all, we had the issues with trying to staff our office, and second of all, I had some family medical issues that just prohibited me from trying to make the rounds. So I apologize for that, and I hope, hope that in the future, I'll be able to come here on a more regular basis. So in any case, since I don't have anything formal present to you in terms of issues that the council might be interested in, I thought what I would do is talk about things that this council has done well, especially when it comes to law enforcement and the criminal justice system. And the first amongst that is the hiring of Joe White as the Chief of Police. I can't say enough about Joe, and I want to start this out by saying, I have, in my four years here, I have disagreed wholeheartedly on certain things with Joe White, and I think that's an important place to start, because one of the hallmarks of Joe as a police officer, as an administrator, is his ability to respect other opinions and other sides. I've actually had the privilege, he's been an administrator for some time now, but I had the privilege of calling him as a witness in a case not too long ago. And frankly, it's my, in my estimation, the reason why we were successful in convicting that particular defendant was because of the integrity that just emanates from Joe when he's on the stand. So I think that this council made a very wise choice. I, I don't think it would be out of line to say that I think that most of the bar here in Ketchikan feels the same way. I've spoken with defense attorneys who were very, very happy with the choice, that the transition has been, in my estimation, seamless. You know, the, I think that the bench appreciates Joe and everything that he brings to the department. The other thing I think that this council needs to be commended on is whatever it is you're doing to keep people here, like I said, I've worked in a lot of different places. I've worked with the largest police departments in the state, and I've worked with the smallest departments in the state. Here in Ketchikan, you have a force that has been together for a long time. There is always transition, there's always people that are moving in and out, but the core of your police department here consists of people that have been here for years. In some cases, and I haven't really seen this anywhere else in the state, people that have been born and raised here, and intend on remaining here for the rest of their lives. And I think that that is something that you can commend yourselves on, I think it's really important. And I bring that up to bring up one last point, which is, in the future, if this, if this body hears requests from either Chief White or any of us administration to assist law enforcement officers in any way and incapacity, I'd ask that you do that and think about that. I know that in the national media and across media lines, we see the role of a police officer being scrutinized on a regular basis. And I don't disagree with that scrutiny, but on a base level, I think everyone, and everyone, I think realizes this, being a police officer is a very difficult job. And when I say that, I, I think a lot of people say that, and they don't really think about exactly what that means. When someone makes a call to the police department because they're someone that's intoxicated in front of their house or on the street, they call a police officer. When they hear screaming next door from somebody that they've heard screaming for years and years and years, or days and hours, they call a police officer. When people are scared, they call police officers. It is very difficult day in, day out to deal with the stress that these officers have to deal with. And we have, I believe this is correct, I think we have four different shifts, and each shift is supposed to have four officers. I don't think, I think there was one point in my, my four years here where we had all four of those shifts covered. Now, a lot of that has to do with staffing. People come, they go, and we just can't keep up with the staffing, or I should say KPD can't keep up with the staffing. It's important to have those shifts completely staffed, and the reason why is because of that stress, people need time off. People need to be able to decompress, people need to, they just need to be able to walk away from the job every once in a while, and to go and live normal lives, which is, I think, the reason why we're able to keep the officers that we have here, that core of, that core group of officers, because a normal life here in Ketchikan is a good thing. I know for, for me personally, and my family, that's one of the reasons why we came here, is the quality of life that Ketchikan can offer. And I would ask this council to assist Chief White and his administration over there at the police department in any way they can. And I think you're doing a great job so far, and I just appreciate that, and I hope, I hope that happens in the future. I don't have anything else to offer, I've spoken here for some time. Is there any questions that anybody wanted to ask of me specifically?
I have one. Sure. SB 91 came about, and there was, there were some genuine concerns about the effectiveness, and that we went soft on some areas to where our police department was turning into babysitters almost. And now they have SB 54, I think it is, on the table. Can you give us some insight into how those changes will affect our, I guess, the system overall?
Well, let me start by saying, SB 91 is an endeavor for criminal justice reform. And as both a prosecutor, a practitioner, and as a human being, I, I full-heartedly agree with criminal justice reform. Recidivism is at all-time highs, and that's something as a lawyer, as someone who practices in the courts, I see it with judges, I see the frustration seeing the same people come back for the same reasons over and over and over again. We're spending a lot of money on incarceration. That said, incarceration is not something necessarily that we need to throw out the window. SB 91 was based on a lot of thought, based on practices that had been used in other states. Texas, I think, has allotted its corrections reforms, its criminal justice reforms, has saved billions and billions of dollars a year. Kentucky's the same way. So we used a lot of the evidence, I shouldn't say we, but the legislature and the Criminal Justice Commission, which is the commission that set forth the recommendations for SB 91, they put a lot of thought into that, they studied that a lot. So what we have, I don't, I don't want to say that we're, we're soft on crime, but I think what the, what the commission looked at, and eventually what the legislature looked at, was what are, where are areas that we can reduce recidivism? How can we do that? And they changed a lot of things that, for the entirety of my career, had always been there. Some of the things I actually agreed with full-heartedly, others I questioned, and some, you know, personally I disagreed with. What we're seeing in SB 54 is trying to change some of the things I think that we're realizing just aren't working. I'll go, the two of the components of SB 54, which if everyone doesn't know, they're going to be having their 30th special, I don't know, one of their special sessions with the legislature next week. Two of the components I think that are kind of important here in Ketchikan is they're going to change the potential for jail time on first-time felony offenders for C felonies, C felonies. And a C felony could be a felony DUI, it could be assault in the third degree, theft in the second degree. With SB 91, prior to SB 91, we had ranges, and so the maximum on a C felony prior to SB 91 was five years in jail. You're presumed to have a certain term imposed upon you based on your prior felony record. So if you had one prior felony, or excuse me, if you had no prior felony convictions pre SB 91, it was zero to two years. If you had a felony conviction, it was two to four years, and then three to five years for a third. Now with a C felony, the presumption is 18 months, all suspended, so no jail time imposed at all. And what the legislature is hearing, and what the Attorney General, and what our department is, is hearing as well, is that doesn't work so well in every single case. I know media reports there's a case in Juneau, it was a, it was a driving offense of vehicle theft, I think perhaps, and then a high-speed chase that went through most of Juneau, and that person, and there was a lot of public outcry about that, and that person was looking only at C felonies with no possibility of jail. So there, and there's been cases like that, that have been brought to the legislature's attention, and I think that's what they're going to try to address, at least with the C felonies. The other one is violations of conditions of release. So when someone is charged with a crime, they come into court and they're arraigned, and they're given a set of conditions of release that they're supposed to follow. Show up to court, stay out of a certain place, stay away from, you know, a certain person, don't drink alcohol, don't consume drugs. When a person violates their condition of release, that's actually a crime, and prior to SB 91, it was a misdemeanor, and it was subject to all of the same jail time components that a misdemeanor could have. Post SB 91, it became a violation, which was punishable by a maximum of $1,000. And what we were finding immediately afterwards is that the courts were actually the ones who were the most uncomfortable with this, because it provided that if you did violate your conditions of release, you'd be remanded on the underlying case. And so judges were getting calls in the middle of the night when they were hearing that somebody violated their conditions of release, and asking them to be remanded, and these people were represented in those underlying cases, and their attorneys weren't there. So that, that's just one reason why that wasn't really working all that much. And there wasn't really a penalty, I mean, I've been in court before hearing judges talk to defendants, saying if you violate your conditions of release, there's a $1,000 fine that can be imposed. And I, my personal feeling is that just doesn't have an impact on a lot of defendants that we see. So there, the, the change there is they want to make that to, back to a B misdemeanor now with a maximum of five days in jail that can be imposed, and frankly, in my experience, in my practice, that's fine. The underlying case is still going to be addressed in terms of bail, but that five days in jail should address whatever it is that we need. There's another problem too, is that if you have a violations of conditions of release conviction, it has an impact on your bail in other cases. With it being a violation, it's a little bit more difficult to track. If it goes back to a misdemeanor, it'll be easier to track for law enforcement purposes. So I, SB 91, I think it needs, it needs repairs, and SB 54, I think, is the, the answer to that, at least the, the starting point. What I would say, you know, the Attorney General wrote an opinion piece, I think it was about a year ago now, and I think that one of the bigger components that's kind of overarching criminal justice reform has more to do with funding and less to do with what SB 91 is. I could go on and on about things that I think that are problematic with SB 91, but the real problem is, is that the idea was that we would have this cost savings, $400 million was the number I remember being thrown around, that would somehow go back into the criminal justice system and allow for recidivism, or allow for recidivism, to the anti-recidivism-based programs. And that, I think everybody knows here, that's not happening at the state level. And I heard something on the radio the other night, where, I think it was somebody from the District Council, somebody that was involved with the SB 91 process, talking about, well, at least now, now we have a promise that someday in the future, maybe six years out, we will have money to address these problems. It, it doesn't really work that way. These are problems that we have right now. Controlled substance abuse is one of the biggest drivers of, of crime, not just in Ketchikan, but statewide. And in order to address that, we need tools, and treatment is a big tool that we need. Incarceration, I should say this, incarceration does work, it's not the best option for, for people that have controlled substance issues. It's, it's way down there on the list, and it's expensive, as is treatment, you need money for treatment. Here in southeast Alaska, we have one treatment facility, and that's Car House here, and I think they have 15 beds, and I've talked to the people that run that program, and SB 91 didn't send them any fun, any funds. They haven't opened up new beds. And when I say that's for all southeast Alaska, I know Rainforest up in Juneau exists, but it's a 30-day program, it's more of a detox facility in my estimation than anything else. So for all of southeast, we have one facility. We need more money to solve these problems. So that, first and foremost, when you're talking about criminal justice reform, you know, SB 91, SB 54, all aside, the system needs money, and it's difficult to ask for that in these times. Any other questions? Did I answer your question?
Yes, you did. Appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions? And again, thank you for your time, and please feel free to, to contact me personally in my office, or if you want me to come and present to the council again, just let me know, and I'll be more than happy to come forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us down to item 7A2, award of contract number 17-36, birth-free barge overhaul of Vigor Alaska LLC.
Yeah, Your Honor?
Go ahead, Dick.
I move the City Council Director, City Manager, to enter into contract number 1736, birth-free barge overhaul with Vigor Alaska LLC at a cost of $1,888,098, establish a 5% contingency in the amount of $94,000. Bringing the total project cost to $1,982,098. Authorize a budget transfer in the amount of, okay, $1,992,806,000 from the appropriate reserves of the Port Repair and Replacement Fund to the birth-three improvements and barge overhaul capital account, and approve the funding in the amount of $1,992,806,000 from the birth-three improvements and barge overhaul capital account.
Have a second.
Second.
Who, second? Dick?
No, I think we've had this started a long time ago, we just need to move on. I would probably only have one question for Steve, is, when is that, and the one that's going to be picking up the ramp, is going to start?
Port Harbors Director Steve Cokeron. We had a pre-construction meeting on the birth-three improvements today. They're finishing up, Turnigan has finished up a job in Sitka around Thanksgiving, so they'll be here first couple days of December, and if the Vigor contract for the barges approved tonight, it's planned to go into Vigor mid-December.
Any other question? Thank you. Please call the roll.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy? Yes. Gage? Yes. Flora?
Yes.
Isom? Yes. Severson?
Yes. That brings us down to 7A3, award of contract number 1735.
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes. That brings us down to 7A3, award of contract number 1735, design of birth one and two expansion Moffett Nickel. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council Director, City Manager, to enter into contract number 1735, design of births one and two expansion with Moffett and Nickel, at an initial cost of $1,875,093. Authorize budget transfers in the amount of $824,763, and $1,053,300 respectively, from unexpended funds from the births one and two replacement phase for a capital account, and from appropriated reserves of the commercial passenger vessel fund to the births one and two expansion account, and approve funding from births one and two expansion account.
Second.
Seconded. Mark?
Well, the time is now. We've got to get going on this project. I know there's been some talk of urgency to get this done, so that we can be ready in 2019 for these post-Panamac ships. I know there's going to be a public hearing. I just want to make sure that while we're running through this at as efficient a rate as we can, that we really take the time to listen to the public and how this is going to impact other local businesses, other local ports, harbors users, and make sure we have an open mind and are listening to their concerns.
Thank you. Yeah.
I support this fully, because as most of you know, the tourism industry is the only industry that's increasing, and it has been for the last two years, at least this year. It's an industry worth putting our money into. And it was on the front page of today's Ketchikan Daily News, so I halfway expected people to speak up about it, but maybe at first glance, they're not interested, I don't know. But I agree with you, Mark, we need to listen to concerns of the people, too, but I'm voting for it.
Any mail? I think there was some misconception, heard a few comments about that we were approving designs. So, Steve, could you kind of tell us, explain to us and the public what this step is?
Certainly, Porton Harbor's Director, Steve Corcoran. Yeah, tonight, we're just getting approval to get the design contract underway. One of the first milestones is going to be to have another public meeting to review the conceptual designs that you all saw back in January, and narrow it down to what are we going to go after. And so, we'll be planning on doing that in the next couple of months. We don't know exactly when yet. We want to see when all the budget meetings are scheduled. We do have a public meeting on the Uplands Planning in mid-November, so best guess will be probably early January. They're going to get going on other design aspects that they can go without having to narrow down everything. But that's what we're starting on tonight. It's an aggressive schedule, just in case we do need these ready by 2019. A much more comfortable schedule is having it ready by 2020. The critical path is going to be the barges. We're going to have to have those under contract before anything else. So, what they're proposing is actually two different design contracts. One is design of the barge, and get the barge on the street, and then the other to design the birth improvements.
Any questions, Steve?
And I do know, I've been telling people tonight was just about getting, you know, getting permission to get going back on design. So, when people ask me, "Well, do I need to go tonight?", I would say, "No." But I will make sure you know when we're going to be back into the design work again. And there's a lot of people that I stay in contact with, from all the, you know, different parts of town, different births, or different shops and that, that have been to the other meetings. And I always make sure they know, plus we run the ads, and I'll be hitting the meeting circuit. I'm doing Chamber of Commerce next week, doing the radio show tomorrow, doing AARP two more weeks. And then we'll probably do some Rotary Clubs and other stuff as that in the next couple of months, making sure people know that, yeah, this is the time to talk. You know, if you want input, this is the time to do it.
I appreciate that. Any questions? Please call the roll. Thank you, Steve.
Yes, sir.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
That brings us down to item 7A5, resolution number 17-2683, adding new section 2.3.5 concerning volunteer firefighters to the City of Ketchikan Personnel Rules.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move the City Council to approve resolution number 17-2683, adding new section 2.3.5 concerning volunteer firefighters to the City of Ketchikan Personnel Rules, and establishing an effective date.
Second. Then moved and seconded. Judy?
Well, I just want to make sure that I understand that this is just the first step, and that we are still going to create an ordinance like we had directed before, and that this gets things moving now, but that we're going to get the ordinance. So, I guess, is Mitch here? Maybe he can...
I mean, I can do that if you'd like. There's no ordinance on the subject at all. All our personnel rules are in the personnel rules.
Right.
And those are...
Well, I think that...
Those are created by resolution, by virtue of the ordinances that say you can do that.
I think that one of the reasons for the ordinance is that the personnel rules can be changed at any time. And we found that at, that when this was changed, there had been an exception in place, and then it was decided that the exception would no longer be viable, and it was just removed without any advance notice, and we didn't know about it until the people came. And so, when we had our last meeting, I don't know if you were here or not.
I was, and actually, Councilmember, what it appeared to me had taken place is that the fire department had set an internal policy that I was completely unaware of, that would have no effect, because the personnel rules set forth in the resolution controlled. I mean, they could certainly manage that way, but if push comes to shove, it's the personnel rules approved by resolution that the council has authorized. Where and how this policy came about, it is now basically reflected in the new personnel rule, I have no idea. In other words, there was the personnel rules set by resolution at some point in time, and actually, the first time I had seen it was when you provided me a copy, the department, through a policy statement, and made the change with greater latitude towards relatives and volunteer firefighters that did not match up with the personnel rules.
Right, but I think everyone was aware of that. I mean, this wasn't, everyone knew about that exception. I mean, management knew, human resources knew, and then they decided to pull it out, and that it wasn't going to happen. I think an ordinance, that's what we had decided at our last meeting, and it was Carl that said...
That's fine. It'll just be, you know, a couple of months at least down the road.
No, that's fine. That's fine. I understand that. I just think that we should still go ahead and move forward in that direction.
Can do.
Thank you.
Any other comments? So, just to be clear, we're going to pass the resolution, adding the new section to the personnel rules, and it's in the intent of the council to direct staff to come back with an ordinance, mirroring that. If I have forehand that says that, I guess on the mirroring, okay. So, would you call the roll on the resolution, please?
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes. Bring this down to 7A6, three-year extension of the 215-218 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the City of Ketchikan and Public Safety Employees Association. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move the City Council to approve the three-year extension of the 2015-2018 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the City of Ketchikan, Alaska, and the Public Safety Employees Association, and direct the City Manager to execute the extension on behalf of the City Council.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Can Lee, anything?
Seems straightforward to me.
Anybody else? Dave, you have anything to add? Okay. Would you please call the roll?
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes. So, that brings us down to telecommunication, or item B2, Telecommunications Division 217 Capital Budget Transfer.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council to authorize transfers of $130,000 from and to various accounts within the 2017 Telecommunications Division Capital Budget to fund identified division needs that were not included in the original capital improvement program as detailed in the Telecommunications Division Manager's Report dated October 10, 2017.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Lee?
Do you have anything on this?
Any else?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Dick.
Yeah, just a question for, I guess, telecommunications folks is, this is identified to do three things, more LG, or 4G LTEs, a key card system, and a head equipment. I'd like to know how much money is being allocated to each of those, unless I'm missing it somewhere.
There's a little schedule on the follow-up motion, but I can go through that real quick. Dan Lindgren, Assistant KPU Division Manager. So, the projects that were, there's $90,000 that we're going to transfer from the microwave project, and that's going to go into the 4G LTE budget, so that we can continue with adding capacity and also adding coverage areas throughout Ketchikan. So, we've got a couple of projects that we'd like to get moving on right away relative to that. Our roaming revenues have been way above budget this year, and we've done really well, but we really need to make sure that we address those capacity issues and also some coverage areas that we'd like to bolster. $25,000 is coming from, out of the CO switching account, and that's going into the building account, and that would be for the key cards. And so, we want to increase our security at our main CO and all of our office locations. There's, it's just a better way that we can manage those facilities than having keys, you know, keys that tend to get lost and are harder to, you know, when you have turnover, to make sure you get the keys back. And with key cards, we'll be able to administer that a lot better and have a lot more secure facilities. And then, $15,000 we're transferring from the copper cable capital account into the head-end account. And we just don't really have as much need for the copper cable as we do. We're, you know, our network's really driven off of fiber now, so we just haven't had the need. We'll look at that budget item going forward, but we'll use that $15,000 to go into the head-end account, and we need to do some upgrades to our verimetric system. And this is an encryption system that encrypts the video content that goes to, you know, on the TV service. So, those are the three amounts.
Hi, Dick.
Yeah, thank you. On the first item, where it was the $90,000 going into, could you, maybe next meeting, give us a little memo that says, "Here's kind of what you got planned." You said expand the coverage and get more radios and more, I guess, cell phones to sell. Just expand on that a little bit for us.
I can tell you what those are. So, there's, there's a technology that we can add additional radio frequency in order to add capacity. And so, we own the AWS spectrum for Ketchikan, and by transmitting both on the Verizon frequency that we lease from them, and then adding the AWS capability, it essentially doubles our capacity. So, like, from the landfill site, we have already implemented that AWS spectrum prior to this season. We'll be adding that to the West End location, which is another high-volume location. And then, we're also having a couple areas that we, where the coverage needs some supplemental coverage. Up at the library, we're going to add a site up there. Around the White Cliff area is another area where we've got some signals, where we don't have a strong signal, so we want to put another microcell there. Those are the main projects that would be accomplished with this budget transfer.
So, if I could, but what's a microcell? Is that another antenna on something, or what?
It's essentially just a small cell site. So, instead of, you know, having a tower mounted that might have three different radios and three different sectors of antennas, a microcell's typically going to be an omni setup. So, it's just, it's less expensive, and it's really just to fulfill a coverage gap in a small area as opposed to a larger area.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other question? Thanks, Dan. Would you please call the roll?
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes. That brings us to item eight, approval of vouchers, Ketchikan Daily News, $3,189.25.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move to approve vouchers to the Ketchikan Daily News, the amount of $3,189.25.
Second.
Moved and seconded?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
We call the roll.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes. That brings us down to the manager's report. Dave?
Nothing new to add, Your Honor, but I would like to follow up on Steve's report, which is in 985, and recognize James Wilson, who was named Ketchikan's Port and Harbor's Employee of the Year by the Association of Port and Harbor Administrators.
Is he here?
Don't think so.
All right, thank you. The manager brings us down to City Attorney's File.
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Future agenda items.
You know, I had something, Your Honor, that I was considering having an agenda item, but I think I'll just send it around to the council members first, and maybe we can see if, I don't even know if it's something that's appropriate for an agenda item, or if we just look at it.
Okay.
See if it's something that works that way. I don't know.
Good. We can just start it that way. Bring this to Mayor and Councilwoman. Dick?
I would mention that the day, I spent most of the day at the Alaska Forest Association's annual conference here in town. And they're working hard on trying to bring back some semblance of the timber industry, but getting timber is a challenge, and they're only looking at getting about 36 million feet of timber out of the Forest Service next year. Twelve of that doesn't look like it's going to materialize, and most of the sales are from one to six million feet, which are almost not worth mobilizing for. But they're all pretty positive, and there was a good dialogue going back and forth. And it was mentioned that there's three key things that has to be done. And one is getting rid of the roadless rule. The second one is reversing the transition plan, which was approved by Obama at the last minute. And then, dealing with, I think, some T-lump issues. And so, they're working on it, and I think if they ever need our support, then we need to provide it to them. If they're working on it, they'll come back to us if they need it. Oh, the other thing I mentioned that everybody's heard about this initiative that deals with, I guess, fish streams being the number-one thing going, and it sounded like that the court said that what the lieutenant governor, he said it wasn't going to work. And the court says, "Yeah, it's going to work. They're going to get the initiative." And that's looking like that we're, they're hoping that, because it's going to affect every resource industry in the state, that the governor will appeal that to the court. And if not, the Resource Development Council of Anchorage is giving... And if not, the Resource Development Council of Anchorage is gearing up to try to stop it. But we, if we can lend our support, they'll come back to us, let us know. We can't have that thing go, because that means you're doing management very citizen initiatives, and it doesn't work. Anyway, it was a good meeting.
Thank you, Nick. Judy?
So I had the opportunity today to meet with the gal from our local chamber, and a couple of the folks that are on the board. I spoke with them with regard to the state chamber meetings that they had and what their meetings were about. They had received a presentation on the cost of healthcare in Alaska, and how drastically high that is compared to the lower forty-eight. And in addition, I was provided with an ordinance that Anchorage accepted that I'm gonna forward to everybody regarding, should someone request it, that the practitioner and facilities, upon request, provide an estimate of anticipated healthcare charges when they're, and I don't know if that's, you know, something that we can do, but I think that it's worth giving it a look and seeing if maybe we can make some headway there. Other than that, I echo what the district attorney said about our police department. We do have great cops here, and a big part of that is because many of them have grown up here, and they understand Ketchikan and the struggles that we have, and they also understand the great things that we have going for us. And I think that anytime we can, you know, rise up our own people, that's what we should be doing.
Cindy? Emily?
Well, I echo what she's saying, especially, I think she's got a good idea over there that she's gonna pass around, but, and for the fun part, and to echo kind of the red ribbon thing, they're putting on a really cool, I'm gonna say this, and it's gonna be a tongue twister, Wicked Wardwalk next on the twenty-seventh out at Ward Lake in the campgrounds. And I know there's a bunch of kids here today, because you gotta get your little thing, but if anyone's interested in being a part of that, you can get community work service. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna volunteer, because it just looks like fun. But basically, it's like haunted house outside. So it's the KYI group that's doing it, along with some other youth groups around town, so it looks like a lot of fun. So any adults and any kids who wanna jump in and scare some thirteen and over people.
Julie?
Yeah, I drive Third Avenue, just past the library, every day, sometimes a couple times a day, and it's true that that sign that flashes how fast you're going, it works, it helps you slow down. Today was the first day I, it was gone.
It's gone.
So I drove by there at five-thirty, and it's gone.
What?
It's been, it's set up for repairs.
Oh.
It had a bad, it had a bad seal to it, so we've been working with the manufacturer, and they've been, they're gonna take it back. So it'll be, as soon as we get it back, we'll put it back up.
Great. I'm glad to hear it wasn't vandalized.
It does make me slow down, too.
Yeah, it makes me slow down every time. That's it. Thank you.
Mark?
Putting on the brakes.
Tip of the cap to KPU Telecom. So show up to work today, no internet, and that just brings your workday to a standstill in this day and age. And from the first phone call, to the office folks, to the technician who came out and took care of us, they were professional, they were prompt, they had us going in a really timely manner, and it really turned, it really turned our whole day around. So I'd like to just thank them. It was, it was a really good experience.
Good, good. I had an opportunity to talk to Lou today. He was walking in the hallway. He's hoping to get back in the community around November first, and he'll probably be sitting down and talking to some of us just to catch up on what's going on, and I wished him well, and he sounded pretty good. Sounded pretty good on the phone, so that was nice. We have no need for an executive session. That brings us down to adjournment. We have a kitchen?
Same.
I think we have some papers assigned, right?
Yeah.
Bring one up.
Thank you. Go ahead.